I haven't had time to prepare how that works. They did have to use the two hundred building to do what I put on my table. It's going to turn high. It gets one out of the turn high. My reading on it is too. Are you sweeping it here? People underneath that might go.
Yeah, I'm going to.
I must have been there all.
Listen. Uh huh. Now we can hear you. Shh. I see it. I see it.
The wires ripped right out of it.
If I can get it to stay up here.
Okay, the stream. Test. Okay, stream is on. We'll call a meeting order. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge you to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to America and to the republic which stands on your behalf in this office with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need a few minutes. August eighteenth, regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor? August twentieth, special meeting. With corrections. All in favor? Okay. Now it's the presentation by Mr. Rossi.
Alright, so I met tonight with the Audit Committee. We spent about an hour going through the financial statements. Under the New York State Five Point Plan, it's the Audit Committee's job to review the financial statements, make recommendations to the Board of Education for acceptance. Once any financial statements are accepted, they will then be sent to OSC, SDE, and the federal government. Requiring these financial statements. Page one and two is our opinion on the financial statements. And at the bottom of page one, we give an unmodified opinion. We say, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly. That's unmodified. That's the highest opinion we have. After that, you have several pages of management discussion and analysis. It's required under GASP thirty-four. And management discussion analysis is on the quote from page accounting. And we are not permitted by New York State to keep our books and records on that basis. We actually keep our books and records on a modified control basis of accounting. And if you turn to page thirteen, you will see the school district's balance sheet as of June thirty, twenty twenty. It is set up in columns, the general fund, special aid fund, small lunch fund, and capital fund. The general fund controls almost all of the activity that happens in the school district. And if you look down towards the bottom, we currently have four million dollars of fund balance. And that's quite an improvement over twenty nineteen. We've actually increased our fund balance almost two million dollars in twenty twenty. You see that we do have some reserves. The reserves are very important. We have an unemployment insurance reserve. It's got ninety-three thousand dollars in it. If the school district does have layoffs, New York State will pay those claims, but we have to reimburse New York State. Then we have a team arrest retirement reserve. That's to smooth out spikes in the TRS rate. That's one of our two pensions that we pay into. Then we have an ERS reserve. That is to smooth out employee retirement system spikes in rates. And then we have an employee benefit accrued liability reserve. That reserve can only be used for sick and vacation time if somebody leaves the district and has unused sick days that we pay. Then we have assigned fund balance. Assigned fund balance is two things. It's eighteen thousand six hundred dollars of encumbrances for purchase orders that were left over at year end. And those purchase orders automatically increase the twenty twenty-one budget. And then the second number in there is four hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. That four hundred thirty-six thousand dollars represents the amount of money that we are telling the taxpayers that we are going to have to use from our fund balance to have revenues equal expenditures. And then we have unassigned fund balance, two point one billion dollars. Right now, that does exceed the four percent allowed by real property law thirteen eighteen. Again, probably prudent to exceed that in twenty twenty. We don't know if the state of New York is going to cut twenty percent of our school aid. And we don't know what additional costs we're going to have with all of the things we have to do for COVID-related expenses. So right now, we are over the four percent. Management and the Audit Committee, the Board, is going to have to write a corrective action plan. And the corrective action plan is going to be as simple as we're going to review our fund balance and place money into reserves to get to the four percent. You see the special aid fund has no fund balance. Again, that is because the governments, federal and state, give us grants. We spend the money and then we get reimbursed. So it's a net zero. School lunch fund has two different fund balances. Twenty-six thousand dollars is in inventory, so it's not spendable. And sixty-three thousand dollars is spendable. And then the capital fund has a deficit fund balance of fifty-six thousand. Most of that is for the Smart School Bond Act. And when the state reimburses us for the monies we spent for technology, that fund will go to zero. If we do a capital project, that's also where that is recorded. But right now, it's only fifty-six thousand dollars negative, and that will go away early next year. So you can see our overall fund balance, all the way to the right. Second number up is four point one million. That is an increase of one point seven seven million dollars over last year. So the district really went in a good financial direction this year. But again, a lot of it was due to shutting the school down in March, not having pupil services, not having transportation going on, not having substitutes. Those things really added to our, I'll say profit for this year, but it's really excess revenues over expenditures. After that, we have several pages of notes to the financial statements. Those go from pages eighteen through forty-four. They are unchanged from the prior year, other than the numbers being updated. There were no new GASP's that affected the district for twenty twenty. That's the governmental accounting standard part. So we had the same exact accounting pronouncements in twenty twenty that we had in twenty nineteen. Page forty-five is a very important page. It shows that management and the Board of Education have a really good handle on predicting the revenues. This is very important in a school district. You see that our budget was for eighteen million three hundred seventy-six thousand one forty-three. And the district actually took in eighteen million six six two four twenty-three. So the district was plus two eighty-six on its revenue budget. Where most school districts get in trouble is they put out an unrealistic revenue budget and then spend the entire budget for the expenditure side, and there's a shortfall, and thus, down goes the fund balance. Page forty-six is the other side of the budget. And this is where the district did add almost two million dollars in fund balance this year. If you look all the way over to the right, these are all the unexpended categories and the unexpended amounts from what the voters approved the budget at. So you can see that we've had some significant savings in different groupings of accounts. And a lot of that is related to COVID. Plus, management really took a hard look at spending the last couple of years. So this has a positive impact on the school district's financial position. After that, on page fifty-four, we have a second opinion from Weston Company. And this opinion is because we do the audit, we can't also do the financial statement. So we have to decide if the district has good internal controls over financial reporting. And in this case, your business office does a tremendous job. As I was telling the Audit Committee, Jessica, Sarah, and Sandy helps out with the scholarships, the extra classroom, that things. No issues whatsoever with internal controls over reporting. We don't have to make material journal entries. Everything is provided to us timely. We're sitting here a month before the reports even due, so that's a good sign. On page fifty-six, we have our third opinion from Weston Company. And this opinion is unmodified. This opinion is because the district spends more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in grants and gets reimbursed, school lunch for free and reduced in surplus foods. So anytime a district goes over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, they have to have a compliance audit. We did a compliance audit of the school lunch fund, and we found no issues. And on page fifty-eight, you can see what the federal government ended up giving the district. It's broken down by the grants, six eleven, six nineteen, title loan, and then the food cluster, which was a little over four hundred nine thousand dollars. And that is what we tested. We're required to test twenty percent. We required, we tested about thirty percent. After that, we have our last opinion from Weston Company, and that is on page sixty-two. We have to give an opinion on the extra classroom activity funds. Because the extra classroom activity funds are cash basis, we have a modification of the opinion. And all this states is that we can't be at every event to determine if all the money collected at the event actually made it to the bank. So we audit from the time the money goes in the bank, and we audit from the time the check is ready. Page sixty-five lists out the clubs that the district currently has. These clubs are subject to New York State sales tax, even though the school district is not. These clubs are meant to be a teaching opportunity for students. One of the management letter comments last year is that we had inactive clubs. That would be if there was no receipts and disbursements in one club. That doesn't exist this year, so that was corrected. And then finally, in this report, page sixty-seven and sixty-eight is our management letter. We always talk about the prior year activities, prior year findings, excuse me, and the current year. So in the prior year, I mentioned number one. We had some inactive clubs. We don't want to see the general fund pay for an advisor if there's no activity going on. But that was corrected. We also had a segregation of duty issue last year. The business office was doing HR function and payroll functions. We never want to see a system where somebody can set a new employee up and pay that employee. That was corrected twice last year. So the one person left, and now it's been corrected again. As of September one, twenty twenty, the district has put in place where another individual is going to take some of the HR functions so we don't set the employee up and pay. And then in the current year, we just have one finding. And that is that we exceeded real property law thirteen eighteen, which says the district cannot have more than four percent of its subsequent year budget in unassigned fund balance. So like I said, the Board, the Audit Committee, management's going to have to write a corrective action plan within ninety days and submit that to the state. And that is as simple as saying that we'll review our fund balance, and we will put the money in appropriate reserves as permitted by New York State. But overall, it's a very clean audit. I hope the Audit Committee makes a recommendation to the Board for acceptance. If they do that, we will take this out of draft. We will find this. We will send it to OSC, SDE. Jessica and I will certify it, and it will go to the federal government. Now, the Audit Committee and I had some discussion, but is there any questions the Board or Audit Committee members who didn't show up would like to have?
He's speechless.
I'm now a Northwalk Southern guy. That's all I'm going to say. My friends can't even show up. So are there any questions about the audit, or what we did, or how we did it, or anything that you feel you'd like to discuss further?
The only thing I'm concerned about is possibly that twenty percent cut in state funding. How will that affect us?
Well, we talked about that. Initially, the district has decided to record the full receivable that is on the books. Right now, in September, they're withholding twenty percent. That is about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the district. But right now, New York State is just saying that they're going to hold that money. Down the road, if there was a twenty percent, Jessica, what'd you say it was?
Two point six. Two point six.
Two point six million. So you could see that it was prudent to keep that unassigned fund balance at two point one million because if there was a twenty percent aim cut, we would actually have a deficit of six hundred thousand dollars in that unassigned. And we'd probably be having to look at some changing in program, changing in, you know, staff because there wouldn't be enough money coming in from real property taxes to cover that type of shortfall.
Would our fund balance be able to be massaged or finagled in such a way that would that twenty percent possible shortfall that we could have to see? And that takes so much out of the fund balance.
Well, what could happen is, on page thirteen, you do have restricted fund balance, assigned fund balance, and unassigned. So right now, the unassigned is two point one million. As Jessica just told you, two point seven could be taken away. But the ERS reserve could cover the ERS contribution that is due in December. The TRS, it cannot cover the contribution, but it could be used to offset a hundred and forty-six thousand of that. We're currently paying about six hundred thousand in TRS each year. And then the employee benefit accrued liability reserve could be utilized. They did just come out at the end of August with a memorandum that says districts can use reserves for COVID-related items without anything other than the Board establishing that. But those reserves that were used, not for the intent of the reserve under the law, would have to be reimbursed by at least twenty percent each year to get it back to the level at which you started to take it from. So we do have four point one million. Two point seven could get taken away. So we could weather the storm for one year. What would happen in twenty-one, twenty-two if they continued down that path? We would have a big issue as far as curriculum, you know, what we could offer, sports, you know, extracurricular activities. Those things would probably start to have to get caught in twenty-one, twenty-two.
Do you see any compensatory financial aid from the federal government?
I told this to the Audit Committee. The way New York State wrote the twenty percent is they wrote that we will hold it, and we will resend it out when the federal government pays, you know, gives us funding. I don't see neither, no matter who wins the election in November, I don't see the ability to bail out fifty states in the United States of America. So if you're looking at seven hundred schools with New York State alone, you know, New York City wants money, New York State wants money. I don't see where the federal government would have that kind of money to bail out everybody. But again, that's just my opinion, you know, looking at the trillions of dollars in debt that the federal government's in.
Thank you, Mr. Rossi. Any other questions for Mr. Rossi?
No more questions, Mr. Rossi.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Did a good job holding the microphone.
Yeah, I hope everybody could hear, but I'll talk to you later. Thank you very much.
Okay, I got my microphone working again. Since there are no other questions, as a member of the Audit Committee, I'd like to recommend the adoption of the Audit from Weston Company. All in favor? Correspondence, are there any correspondence that weren't included in the back? No correspondence this month. Onto the financial approvals. Questions on the bills? If there are no questions on the bills, is there a motion to accept them? Stand by.
I'm sorry. Jessica, do we ever get the Chem Act one resolution?
No, and they haven't. I, because during the summer, the boilers are shut down, so we don't provide chemicals. They have to send back to even discuss it with them for the last few months.
We don't, we don't get any. So we have to go for, for chemiles by miles.
In this month?
Sure.
I don't think there was anyone. There should be. There should be one. They all come during the summer.
Chemat. Page two of eight. Fourth entry down.
Are there no monthly, you're wrong.
I'll have to ask the monthly water treatment. Yeah, I'll have to ask them about that one. Because we just talked about it. I'll take it back tomorrow.
Sorry, thank you.
If there are no other questions, there is a motion. All in favor? Treasuries report. Questions on the Treasuries report? If there are no questions on the Treasuries report, we need a motion to accept it. All in favor? Reports. Elementary building.
Good evening, everyone. And we are proud to report that we have successfully completed more than one week of school. And our students, I assure you, are truly excited and happy to be back. And the dust is starting to settle a little bit, and the smiles are throughout the building. Our staff work really, really hard across the board, including the custodial staff, cleaners, our cafeteria workers, teachers. Everyone has just put in for board to get our kids back and ready. One addition that I do have for the report is I would like to thank Audrey Williams for the donation of several hundreds masks for elementary students. And Audrey came with her collaborators to deliver all the masks with a big smile. And they were distributed to students on the first day of school at all their home rooms. So thank you for that.
Do we do provide lunches for the kids the days when they're not here?
We have set up. Jessica, do you want to answer that in more detail? The answer is yes. It hasn't, it hasn't been, it's provided, but we are hoping to see an increase in the actual numbers that are predicted now.
So all parents and parents are welcome to come up to the elementary cafeteria in the bus turnaround. And we actually hand them like a takeout container of a lunch and a breakfast. But all they have to do is come up and we'll provide that for them.
I had a question about the arrival times of the morning. Have that worked for you when you needed it to, because it's up at fifty?
We did have, actually, this morning, we was at thirty-four and fifty. Had to use the senior year for the session that we love really. For the most part, I am really proud of everyone who kind of volunteered that we have. So overall, we think we did a successful. We're very proud of you. And that's why we had the end ball that honored the primary year.
Do we have any students now using those new devices that we purchased? And we don't want to go into the stuff and get it wrong.
Right now, we were just troubleshooting a couple of them. So I, I'm the one of the staff that lives in Stratford. So I was tasked with taking them to the home and trying them out. When I took them home, they were connecting to my devices, but they were, it would say no internet. So I was looking to keep a relaxed week on coming up, like problem solving. It looks like there was no service at my house, so that bike wasn't connected with the service, or to, to the internet, but it connected to the device design. I tried them here. They, it worked, it worked okay. And actually, we had just, I've had Matt, he went home too, just in town. He lives right around the corner here. But I just wanted to see service-wise. When I was here, it was about two hours of service. So I just wanted to see like away from the school's wifi that would pick up a little bit better.
So that's full of cell towers?
Yeah.
We have a family who's actually tired of it yet.
So then from there, the principals are going to come up with lists of students that need them right away. And then we're going to get them out to those students as soon as possible.
Any more questions now? How's the traffic situation with the Audit Committee? Totally beautiful, described with our traffic.
I think the traffic's fine. We made a change from our original plan. Even with the buses that might be in place, there's a little bit of an issue. Because you still do have some people trying to pass the buses to get to the elementary parking lot. But other than that, our original plan was to empty one bus at a time, which we basically did the first day last Tuesday. And it took us about thirteen minutes to empty all of our buses. Towards the end, we decided there's plenty of room. And looking at the kids who get off the bus, we changed two buses at a time. We come out, then we start at seven. Then we're done usually in two or three minutes. And then that gives kids plenty of time to get in. And also, what it did was it freed up our staff who's outside with the kids to get them checked at the door and everything. We're now able to get to their first class on time. So that was one change that we made. I'm usually over here, but I have, I have not seen an issue with the traffic here. So far.
Off right now.
So far, it looks fine.
I did. I wanted to see the book. I wanted to see because people ask me, is it going to be a jam or a year or anything? The most cars that I saw were three in front. And the only reason it was three is because the one had a little problem getting out of the first car. Otherwise, the flow was unbelievable. There was no problems, no nothing, no backup.
I have just one more question. I was going to wait till.
She's coming right up next. And with that, the high school building report.
All right, all right. With E. Grant as a pastor, Mr. Schmidt. With, again, a fairly smooth opening. We have a very robust virtual schedule. And that, that has been the piece that, that we're all learning. And I think we are as a nation, learning how to do virtual. learning how to do virtual education, uh, with, with that. And you can see there's a virtual schedule on the flip side for our one hundred percent virtual student. Tomorrow, we're piloting our Wednesday schedule, where both the A and B groups who are in person will also be logging in on a modified schedule on Wednesdays, uh, because we are practicing that remote schedule. What if we have to shut down? Are we ready for it? And so, we're, we're ready to try it tomorrow. We tried the first part, uh, just the A group, last Wednesday, that went fairly smoothly, uh, and so tomorrow, we're starting A and B group together, uh, virtual. So, and Mr. Schmidt has a question.
I just want to commend all the principals and administration staff, whoever here that is, you can hear me, congratulations on getting us going, and a huge undertaking, uh, and I'm just glad it's going so smoothly, especially to the students, because they're, they're about a month, but I just had one question about six hundred over. I mean, when I read this, we just got like seven hundred and forty pages in this.
So, one. Yeah, so one, one piece to remember is last year, we had pre-K that also increased that enrollment, and so, and that was how many, was it?
About a hundred.
About a hundred, so a hu- a hundred we lost through pre-K.
Speaking of pre-K, didn't have to start again?
We made contact with, uh, about two weeks ago, the teacher that they hired, four positions, second position, they were just four, so they currently not having a teacher, um, call on them to do the actions, I've never done, because a bunch of their staff, their children go to the same schools, because they can't, they can't, a lot of their staff can't stand the shit out of something, but, 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 they're, they're, so. So, to answer your question, you know, all of their staff, they're, they're, appearing that they're going to be here again, but they're waiting.
In your mind, rage community, you've been talking about, and I have the first survey because, you know, switch virtual ID, for instance.
Yeah, we've talked about it. I thought, I thought about it about two months ago, it just came out a week ago, but, uh, I can't just, all this, I'm not going to make a decision on this virtual snow days yet. Number one, I believe I have to, is need the teachers here, because that's a change in the calendar, and how we're going to work with that, because if we don't use the five snow days, that's five days that will be done earlier in the school year, maybe, unless we negotiate, there will be days, if not, no more to begin, or April break, or something like that. You're still schooling for a hundred and eighty days.
Right.
Which includes those five days. So, there's a lot more than just all of a sudden saying we're going to do virtual days on snow days, and I have thought of it, uh, quite frankly, I like the idea personally, uh, but I'm not sure what it's going to look like yet, so right now, basically, I'm concentrated on getting snow, before I worry about snow days, because I'm hoping they don't come for a while.
I was going thirty-two in our house in the morning, though, you never know.
So, yes, we have thought of it, that we just, there'll be more to come on there, uh, later, because it's just a pilot, so not everybody's going to do it, or they might do it in a certain form, I don't know yet. It's one of my questions at the next cabinet meeting, or whatever it is.
Any other questions? Okay, Dean of Students Athletic Director?
Yeah, hotspot. Uh, I'll first start with the dean, I could be accurate, see, back in the building, I think to sum it up, there was a kid sitting in the corner over there during lunch, and he looked at me and he said, looking at the spacing, each student sits at where there's an orange tab on that table, and it looks kind of odd when you look at it from this perspective, but the kid said he just happened to be able to sit close to his friends and be able to talk to them, because they can communicate, even though there's space out, so he had gone the entire summer without talking to many of his friends besides electronically, so that's what's a little bit different, and it's nice to see. Athletics, um, it's complicated, so.
Changes day.
But I'm going to, I'm going to kind of just skip down to five on my report and kind of change that a little bit. We were supposed to have a CSE Athletic Director meeting Monday morning to determine what would happen in terms of moving forward after the section has allowed low and moderate risk sports to move forward. That meeting was canceled Sunday night because many school districts feel the need to communicate with their Board of Education on the next step. What are they going to allow in terms of intersc- interschool athletic athletics? Uh, are they going to allow it, all right, and what levels are they going to allow? At this point, uh, there's, there were meetings yesterday with boards, there's meetings today, all the way into tomorrow. There are school districts that are opting out, not having fall sports. There are school districts that are moving forward, and there are school districts that are making adjustments based upon their facilities and the dynamics of what they feel they can do safe and smart. So, that's kind of where I'm going to leave you guys tonight, hopes that you can kind of give us some guidance on how you would like to move forward with this. I'm not asking for this decision now, I realize you may want to talk about it in executive sessions, there's too many concerns. Our first concern is, do we want to move forward with fall sports one, which are the low and moderate risk sports, all right? That's question number one. I feel strongly we can. I'm confident that I have a plan put together with the other CSE ADs that we can safely get some athletics going. The next step is probably the one that is going to need a little further discussion, is what levels do we want to allow based on the dynamics of our school district? Um, and I have a paper that I can leave you with, I'm not going to go through it right now, unless you want to discuss it out in this forum, um, that has some of the things I want you to consider before you make that decision. So, and I'll take questions.
Are, is some of the sports, is that a problem with busing, because you won't be able to take enough kids on one bus, you might have to take two buses, when you normally would have taken one?
No, it shouldn't happen, because our sports all travel separately, whether it would be varsity, JV, we don't have any combined, so I believe it's twenty-one, tell me if I'm wrong with that, Jessica. We can't have more than twenty-one on a bus. We also amended our athletic code, and many school districts are allowing parents to transport their son or daughter to the away event game, to and from, and I would like to do the same with that, with permission, just their son or daughter. So, I don't see that being an issue at this point, for away events.
Is there, are there going to be limitations on spectators, too?
At this point, that's a very good question. The guidance that came out, it's forty pages in that document over there, that's still something that needs to be clarified. It's allowing for two spectators per player. The problem is, also in the, the booklet, it says you have to meet the governor's restrictions for outdoor events, so when contacting the Department of Health, is that number fifty? Does that number count players, coaches, from both teams? We're already three-quarters there, getting to fifty, or does that just count spectators? So, we're still waiting for clarification on that. I believe we will obviously have that before we move forward, but that's something that's a part of our discussion tomorrow.
Endorsing people with a number really easy.
Yeah, endorsing's a whole different story. That's a whole different animal we'll have to look at.
Do you have your recommendations for us tonight, if we don't discuss it, aren't we?
Yeah, I have, I have, yeah, I will, I will be giving you a paper, and Mr. Greedy and I have discussed it, and he's, you know, got the background and what we have kind of came, come up with, with an idea of what, how we want to move forward.
I don't think it has to be, it's like our session. They're fairly simple. What we're asking is, will you give us help in deciding? I can make this decision myself, but I thought we would put it out to you folks, because I have had a couple of you send me emails asking certain questions, so we said, well, let's put it all out there for everyone. So far, he's talked about the fact that, and I will tell you that, um, one of the questions that somebody asked me was, well, what was our vote? So, back on September tenth, Dan and I met, uh, along with Ruth. Uh, we had to make a decision at that point. Originally, there were three options, but because of some of the meetings that the, uh, District Athletic Directors and New York State, they whittled it down to one choice, or two choices. Either you have sports, or you don't, and you move them all to the, that what they called that spring one, two, and three after January first. We opted for, we wanted our low, uh, impact sports to go ahead and start on September twenty-first, if they have them. We're still not sure that that will completely go through, but we're confident it probably will. He mentioned, um, levels of play, and probably on the sheet he just gave you, it would be my recommendation that we go with varsity and JV only. We're making a recommendation to Section Three that we should move modified sports to the spring, in hopes that those kids would still have a chance to play. One of my decisions on that was because if we run modified soccer, we will have to rent Hilltop. Hilltop really has no way to patrol and control who comes up there. One of the things that he didn't mention, that for our soccer games here, for instance, you asked how many people can come, and in order for us to maintain what supposedly we would have to do for the recommend, uh, the regulations, we'd have to have a table with staff down at the end of the sidewalk where it first comes up past the school, and they're supposed to get a tag that says that they've been checked, because we have to know about temperature and things of that nature, before they go up to the field. There is no way that we'd be able to do that at the modified field up at, uh, the top of the hill, so that's why it's my suggestion. I'd, I'd love to see the kids play, but at this particular point, if we're going to maintain, um, safety and have some type of, um, discipline about what we're doing with it, then I really think JV and varsity is the best that we can do if we decide to play. So, that is something that we're looking at as well. And the last thing, probably, I don't know if it's here, because I, we did talk about the fact that we also have to decide if we're going to hold that five-thirty late bus that generally takes kids home from practice, and my recommendation for that is that we should not run a five-thirty bus. Generally, last year, there were about two kids on that bus. You saw up there with Mike Rossi, the twenty percent, and it's still possible that we wouldn't get that money, so extra bus runs right now is not what we should be doing. Um, plus, our virtual kids, or the kids, let's say, practice is Monday afternoon, anybody that's in the B group's going to have to get up here to get to practice themselves anyway, so they should be used to transport to and from school. So, again, that's my recommendation for our buses, so we can, uh, if you'd like, we can go ahead and discuss those, but we would like to know, if you want us to go ahead and do sports, um, daily, Dan comes up to me and says another two or three schools have dropped sports either for the fall, or they've dropped them completely for the season. Remsen just canceled all sports for the season. Cooperstown has done that. At some point, we may not have anybody to play, even if we do run a, uh, try to run a schedule, so it's complicated, and I know it sounds easy, but it's not. And then finally, that I had, in case you didn't know, uh, there, there is no argument about football, volleyball, and cheerleading. It has officially been moved to what's called Fall Season Two, which starts March first. There are articles in the paper about people trying to get the state to change their mind and everything, but that's the decision that they've made, and that's the way it's going to stand. So, if you know somebody who's talking about those three high-risk sports, they've been moved to March first, if we're still in session, and if all of this goes well, I mean, there's no guarantees, but that's when that season has been switched to. So, any other questions?
I have a question. Uh, so, when we talk about the students being in cohorts, so that if a student tests positive, we can maybe not have to shut down the whole school, et cetera, whatever. If we're doing, saying, you know, I'll pick up varsity soccer, we're combining then cohorts, aren't we not? So, are we, I think we have to have a discussion about that, because we're potentially setting ourselves up that if they run across a player in another district, right, who's positive, or if one of them is positive, that we could be putting all of those kids to virtual learning, is that correct?
Yes.
This is all very fresh in my mind, too. As soon as I saw that, though, I really did, and I started to talk about having a plan for that, and so we've actually set up an entire network of, uh, support staff, uh, Dan included, that actually appoints a coordinator at each grade level, because we do have this robust virtual schedule. It's not a hundred percent perfect, as we're comparing schedules for in-person and virtual, but at that point, we do have a network of, of sub-staff who are ready to, to move that group into a hundred percent virtual if necessary.
Am I correct in that we have eleventh and twelfth graders that can't even come to in-person classes because they're going to Bozey's, so does that mean if they choose to play sports?
So, the law says that they are allowed to play sports. We, we actually looked into that piece, and it, it's all cohort-based, you're, you know, and, and it's that same argument about, about, you know, that mixing of cohorts, and so Bozey's decision to have those students be virtual is to support that, that cohort model.
So, wait a minute, they can play their sport and still go to Bozey's, if they can't come to school and still go to Bozey's? That makes sense.
It's, it's called the Modified Student Rule, and, and they have the three classes in Phys Ed based on their schedule, whether the remote, a hundred percent remote student can play sports. Yeah, I do have the documentation for that. Yeah, and that's what, you know, the complication of what we're dealing with.
Dan, do you, um, have an idea of areas, schools that have decided Remsen, who are completely?
I have a breakdown, but I will tell you that the breakdown is incomplete, because there are a number of schools that are still deciding, all right? So, I, you know, in terms of, it's a lot of question marks. Um, there are more yeses, I will tell you, with varsity and JV. When it goes to modify, uh, particularly soccer and cross-country, soccer is right now eight yeses and sixteen question marks or no's, and this is from our neighboring CSC schools, and cross-country is nine yeses and fifteen question marks or no's. So, there are school districts that are going to move forward with, you know, all levels, or are going to try to at least. We still can make an adjustment as the CSC committee tomorrow. I'm not sure that'll happen. Pretty much, everybody is very strong that if schools want to move forward, and their, their school district is allowing that, that we should give them that opportunity.
I was just looking at fairness about any modified golf soccer versus a lot of modified cross-country. It's good reason why we can't have soccer, because we have people, what would be the reason that we can't allow modified cross-country?
I think you look into an equity thing.
And beside that?
You look into the whole idea that you are now saying that we are selecting sports that we are going to allow for no other reason than a facility.
But isn't that the reason we can't allow?
It's, yeah, and I, and the only thing I would.
Because we don't have a facility, versus cross-country, those children that can't play soccer, then hopefully they'll do cross-country, and that would give them something to do.
The only other thing I will counter you on is the whole section vote was completely changed by high-risk sports being removed. I'm not sure Section Three moves forward if high-risk sports were still going to be just practice only. When the state removed them last week, a lot of votes changed. The vote was still fifty-eight to forty-two, in terms of school districts feeling they should move forward. It was different until that high risk was removed, so the whole thing of equity came about there. If we're going to allow one, why aren't we allowing everything? It's hard. It's, it's a, it's a very difficult dynamic.
I just think it's so important to put our sports back, and even if we, whatever we do, like, I think we should.
Yeah, and that's why, that's why I'm not, like Ted and I discussed the whole idea that this is not a decision that's easy, and it's not a decision that should be made, you know, unless you want Mr. Greedy to make it with myself.
Anything, I mean, I, I know football players that would do cross-country, just to be able to play something, you know what I mean? Which thing? Which thing?
Well, are they, if a student plays a ball sport that's in the high risk, if they participate in a low or moderate risk in fall one, are they ineligible for fall?
No.
That gives opportunity to the kids that don't have their sports available.
Dan, New York State also suggested that we focus on JV and varsity.
Yeah, section three, actually, when they made their ruling, there's the under-modified considerations. It says according to section three recommendations and guidelines, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but there's some other dynamics involved in this. That's a number of officials. We are short on officials. And also, you know, facilities and the dynamics of each school. It says that, you know, basically, they're looking at the whole idea that sub-varsity level competition should be really looked at by each school, whether or not they want to move forward with that.
Is the shortage of officials dictating some of the changes, too? Because some of the officials are not willing to do it during this timeframe?
Yes.
Are there officials involved in that?
No.
Okay. I mean, I don't, I really don't know. Don't they just...
How many, how many kids are usually in cross-country?
Right now, there's six kids signing up for modified, six or seven for modified, and six or seven for varsity. That will probably change a little bit when things are released over the next couple days. I've had a number of discussions with kids that are considering playing an additional sport, considering. I haven't had any commitments, and nor have they signed up on the electronic form.
How many kids potentially, how many kids you think might play, the kids you could handle in that sport if, I mean, obviously, 100, you know, well, I mean, what's a 100% number?
There are some limits, and they are suggesting that you create travel teams to keep the number small. I don't have the document here in front of you, but I believe the number was 12 for cross-country, in terms of 12 boys or 12 girls that would travel. But that's even going to be over the bus amount.
Which means you can get more than 12. It's just that when you go to a meet, you're basically taking your top 12. Usually, you take your top 12 runners, which does create a little competition during practice. Because if you're out there dogging it, then somebody else might get asked to be on the travel team. So there's nothing wrong with having more kids, which means the amount of boys might be running anywhere.
And I definitely agree with you. I've got a, yeah, I've got a house full of definitely two, but we, I think, have to have a responsible conversation about what exposure that gives our teachers, our staff, our school. Like, if we take a bus full of cross-country players to go to a meet somewhere, the first thing those girls are going to do is get off the bus and go in their locker room. So isn't that a potential exposure?
If allowed.
If, right.
If allowed. A lot of schools are not going to be using one of them, because they're going to do another type of that.
But then what will we do for restrooms?
You would have whatever restroom facility they...
Or if that's where we've got to pick a spot out in the hall from the office that we can close up. We thought of that.
We're talking in this level of acceptance, and not only, as Jen was been talking about, how many parents do we have that are on board with this? Because we've got 20% now that don't want to send their kids to school.
80% do.
I understand, but what I'm trying to say is, how many of the parents have learned to be on board with this?
Well, let's see if we don't provide transportation services and find out how many parents are willing to do that.
Yeah, and that's the part where we have the athletic signup. We have the signups. We haven't done the formally yet. Formally would be the registration that they do. And that would be based on what decisions made here to tomorrow with the CSC, would be opening up tomorrow afternoon.
What would this league, the Golden League, about saying, a lot of the rural kids just won't sign up for anything, and can't go there?
I don't think they're that.
Yeah, if you live up, I can plug the lake, it's hard to get to school.
So what could be the after-school plan in terms of studying that? Would you have study down available, gone through this?
It would be interesting to see how many students sign up for, for these programs.
I have 36 girls signed up for JV and varsity soccer right now, which would be split through the two teams, obviously. And that's where the consequences of the parents. That's when we get, they'd have to get the formally permission where the parent signs off.
That's like step one, where the child does their entry, and then parents do that for the school.
Another concern might be if you combine the team that goes above, because they're too, they're too cohort together a lot. They go to another school, it's sort of like a geometric progression.
The guidelines do allow it. It is in the guidelines that it is allowing for merged teams. Would there be any postseason play? At this point, there would be league play only, and those leagues still would need to be rearranged because of the number of schools that are dropping. And then the only option is a league tournament at this point at the end. There's no sectionals, no states, et cetera, which is the, and that's an option that's on the table.
What's the possibility of not competing with other schools and just having our team and practicing and playing, unless you try?
That would be intramurals.
Which would be awesome.
Yes, which they, they did put into, section three did put into their recommendations, the whole idea if you are not offering certain levels of sports to look at intramurals. But that opens up a whole other area where staffing and supervision and facilities would be needed.
Reduces the risk.
Yeah, yeah.
Provide an opportunity.
Remember at the beginning when you said this was so complicated, and that's why we didn't want to make decisions? You changed your mind. You did that.
I know that you will, because you know all the details and do all the hard work.
Well, because the variables are going to change that we don't know about yet. So you really need to have, you guys.
The hardest part is if you use all of these rules 100% pure, nobody should be able to play anything. Schools should be closed at 3 o'clock like it is right now, and it should be empty. But there's a lot of pressure from parent groups and everything else, that they want their kids to play. Especially, another thing we talked about with the older kids, last year's juniors didn't get a chance to play in the spring, and now they're seniors, and they're not going to get a chance to play, and might not be able to play football again in the spring. So it's really ripping the heart out of them.
It's different.
Our boys' cross-country team was going to combine with Little Falls, and I know it's, we'd be crossing, but one good thing is Little Falls High School is all virtual. So they haven't mixed with anybody, they've just been home, you know? But it is a risk.
Dan, if you don't have any sports, okay, for this cross-country, if you have no cross-country, this, maybe you can wait until March. Cross-country will be going against track. How is the child going to, what do you, at the same time?
It was going against track. The spring sports season was moved to April 19th for a start. It normally would have been March 15th. So when they did the move for Fall Season Two, Fall Season Two starts March 1st, there'll be a small overlap with that spring sports start date, but they're only thinking that'll be a couple weeks. So the kids would not have to choose between cross-country and track, they could do both. They would blend right into each other.
People brought up the concept of playing football games, like, would you have to go to turf fields almost always?
I'm on the section three committee for football, and that's getting to a whole different area. One of the things we are exploring are turf stadiums, because we're not going to be able to play outdoors and douse all that space reality in March, and possibly not even...
Even if it's thought out of the money.
So it would be, based on the regulations being lifted, things changing dramatically, we would have two to three games at one facility consecutively using the same officials, because we are having official problems. It's awesome.
Might be able to play Hilltop for yearly. That's never bad up there. Lying people up there.
Dan, if you have soccer start, say, September 21st, how long would the program be?
Right now, the date they're giving us is November 14th. We could play up until...
Cross-country would not be that. Cross-country was small, right?
Cross-country still could go up to November 14th, too. That's the date they're giving us.
But they could.
They could, possibly. Depends if they have a league.
So they have a good season if they did.
Yeah, league tournament.
What are they saying like basketball? That's usually...
Basketball, fall sport, uh, winter sport date was moved to November 30th. But one thing everybody needs to keep in mind is that the high-risk regulation is in place until December 31st. So unless he makes a change to that regulation, every sport that we have in the winter except indoor track is not going to be allowed. Basketball, wrestling, volleyball are all considered high-risk. It's complicated.
I feel like 100% the right decision for the kids is that they should play.
Give them an opportunity.
I just feel like they spent all this time figuring out how to get them in school. Isn't the right decision for the school?
And that's where the...
Is there a question about changing the physical education restrictions? And that means this is blowing my mind.
Yeah, yeah, no, the physical education restriction is still 12 feet.
So we... That's why it's difficult.
But they have to have these things.
They can't, they can't play soccer in gym class, but they can play soccer after school in their squad.
Because they can't share a hall.
And that's confused a lot of schools.
And I feel like, you know, we talked about previous years when we were talking about cuts and things like that, the equity issue of working parents. So if you have a student who doesn't live in the village of Alcho, and they want to participate in a sport, but the practice doesn't start before, they have nowhere to go between three and four. So we always have study down for that. So if we can't offer the study down, are we running into an equity issue again, that only kids with parents who can give them rides are going to go participate?
I've already moved the head a little bit with the new planning, obviously. I would have JV and varsity soccer. JV would practice at 3:00. I would do like it till 4:40, there would be a break. And then at 5:00, all right, varsity would come in, and they would go until they were finished. So there wouldn't be a problem in terms of school here. And cross-country is very easy, because they are going to meet in the softball field right out here, and they would be ready to go. It's really, you know, and our boys are going to Little Falls as it stands right now.
If we should kind of track and contact with, if you had a COVID case in the fall sports, would that be detrimental to our spring sports?
You mean our winter?
Well, the March.
Yeah, that would be treated through the Department of Health, just like every individual situation is being treated with school districts that have had cases. So the answer to that is, we don't know. However, the Department of Health guidance would then suggest...
Would the Department of Health have to approve everything that you said here?
They've already approved the guidelines, Department of Health, yes. Department of Health, it worked with New York State on all the guidelines.
So your presentation tonight, if I may improve on the Department of Health.
No, I agree with you. I think you tried to get it going. I think you should start something, maybe others, to soccer.
I'm confident with my plan that moving forward with the practicing. I'm going to work with the other CSC AVs on the contest. That dynamic still needs to be worked out, but we'll have at least two and a half weeks to do that. That's, that's another part of this contest.
And I think that's the part, maybe, that makes me, or it's not necessarily, well, I mean, the practicing, we are mixing the two cohorts at first, and I guess, like, in the mixing in with other school districts.
Now, U-Sports has been doing it all summer.
And they...
And are doing it right now. And I know that's confusing to people, because U-Sports and their squad, they have flags of two different things.
Crystal can't put five-year-olds in a gym class.
No, no.
I say we do what we can get away with.
Yeah, I'm comfortable starting sports. I mean, if you're confident in a plan, and Ruth and Ted are confident in a plan, if something happens, what we're going to do, then obviously it's a good place. And man, if you had to do that while we're practicing and sorting out contests, I think the kids really need to have this, I fully understand the level of risk we're talking about. And maybe we, maybe this, the, we don't end up having very many contests at all, depends on how many schools actually participate.
Yeah, they're looking, you're looking at eighth to 12th JV and varsity contests, and six to be possible if modified moving forward.
If for some reason that happened, could we still do something here in a mural?
That would something, be something that we would have to organize. I have not put any legwork into that yet. If that is something, that is something we could organize. And that is. The one thing is, a lot of our plan right now is outside.
What?
Very much, unless it's inclement weather, they may come in to get, you know, calls and go home, to get out of inclement weather. We're really strongly looking at the whole idea of keeping them, these are outside sports. We're not going to, you know, even if it's, you know, bad weather for consecutive days, maybe we would consider gym, but one day of bad weather's not going to put you in gym for practice.
No, I agree with that. They need to stay outside.
Stay outside.
Would you encourage perhaps, like, canceling the practice?
Yes, that's a part of what I have not, the coaches have, that Mr. Krieg and I have discussed, and Mr. Leonard and I discussed, the whole idea that, you know, we do not want to bring things in after school, if possible, to the building. We would like to keep it outside as much as possible.
Same. Thanks for all your work.
I just reminded the roller folks there.
And it changes Dave.
Yeah.
It changes Dave. And the one thing I will tell the coaches as we move forward is, and the student athletes is, is cherish each day, because we don't know what the next thing is going to be.
If enough schools dropped out, which maybe place some school twice, three times?
Yes, yes, three times, yeah. Most definitely, we could do that for soccer. But like I said, the focus is league and regional, as close as we can to keep spacing.
So far, only, nobody's dropped out, I think, right?
Of sports?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, their teams have dropped out.
Our CSC league?
Yeah, so far, three that I know of are Cooperstown...
Oh, that's in our league.
Remson and Waterville.
I didn't know they were in our...
Well, they're in our CSC area.
They're a different division, aren't they?
They're a different division, but we could have played that.
Oh, cross country.
Yeah, be just a league, yeah, be a game. So three from the CSC that I know of, and there's, like I said, there's a number of decisions that are still being made.
I know West Kim knows, meaning the group were last one, because we don't know what they, their final decision was, but this is kind of the week that everybody's really going to start coming down, whether we are or we aren't, because most people are trying to...
West Kim is, was moving forward. They are moving forward with sports. Varsity, JV, and modified. Little Falls is discussing it, I talked with Bart Tully today, they're discussing it. And they're JV and varsity, they're on the side of that modified. Two neighboring schools.
And are we voting to approve, or your, your recommendation is not to move modified?
So our hope is that we can move modified into the spring. If we're still allowed to play, then there should be enough schools that would be willing to put their hands against each other, compromise schedule.
I can get by then, because the transportation aspect of that, it's harder.
Is there any way the modified boys and girls cross-country, because the numbers are so low, that they can practice with the varsity?
That would be information of an intramural. And that's something I would have to work with Mr. Krieg and Mr....
I just think that these modified kids need something, need something, whether it's practice or whatever, an opportunity, just an opportunity.
That they could show up and we have two wonderful coaches that could guide that, I believe.
Mr. Hallison?
Yeah, if it's okay with the athletic director. Basically, you have one coach, there's two of us, one salary, and we do varsity and modified together. Modified does certain lesser things running, but it is doable... But it is doable. My only question is, I wouldn't want favoritism in our way if we don't have modified. You know, if your recommendation is not modified, I think you should give it a yes or no. You know, you know, I don't want to go against...
And this is a discussion that Mr. Krieg and I had. There's a lot of dynamics involved in this. Facility really makes it difficult. We, and at what's safe and what's smart, and what kind of stuff do you want to take? Do you want to take huge stuff? Do you want to take vague stuff into this?
I really think, I mean, I really think vague stuff, because, and I know what you're saying, and I've got my own modified advocate at home. But you're talking about kids who have an entire school year ahead, or a school career ahead versus kids who are at the end of their school careers. And maybe we'll be a little bit more responsible in some of those.
Could we look at, I'm just throwing it out, the whole idea of starting varsity JV and then, you know, see how the first week goes before we look into the intramural aspect with younger kids? Revisit it?
I think that's a good idea. I don't think we should totally shut it down just because it's that modified. And I don't think there should, we should just totally shut down modified. I think we should be...
Add in the, we could look at an intramural aspect.
Do whatever's possible to allow these kids to do something. And I'm not saying this because one of the players is going to run cross-country because he won't. But I know that there are a lot of kids. But there were, there were a lot. I think, I really feel like there are athletes out there that will, because they have opportunity to do something.
And that's, that would also give us some time to, to look at the numbers that are going to come in towards the end of this week when this is moving forward. Because I do feel some kids are going to, you know, jump into, you know, doing cross-country, uh, boys or soccer possibly.
I'd like to just mention a couple of things about cross-country. Again, the ADs have final say on this, and I know Dan's involved in one or two committees with that. Good luck with that. But basically, I've been also in contact with some cross-country coaches. And the AD rep for cross-country is Doug Jones from Sequoia. And the basic plan is this in cross-country if they are okay. Practice starts September 21st. It'll be two weeks of practice. And then three weeks, starting October, Saturday, October 3rd, three weeks of meets. Whether the ADs may keep it dual meets, I don't know much of...
Duals, duals of the four.
They'll, they'll schedule.
Duals of the recommendation.
So basically, cross-country will be done by the end of October. Five to six weeks and done. Tight schedule, so the kids have some kind of opportunity. I'll tell you, they're not, they're not going to run cross-country in March and April. Around here, that's not going to be possible. Alright, and, uh, good luck with football. And the other thing that is being talked about among the cross-country people and the AD rep is based on the guidelines, to establish, that's called local pods. In other words, there may be thousands of little falls, Herkimer, West Canada, as one pod. They would compete against each other. There could be one other school in there. And so you'd have meets just among that small, somewhat local group, so you don't travel. There is a final league meet, we're talking about how that would be organized. There's some talk about sending teams in at different times. Different, different times.
Yep.
But, um, you know, if any sport is doable, it's cross-country. I mean, I'd love to have the modified people, but I wouldn't want to have modified and the other sport couldn't. You know, that kind of goes against what the AD recommends. Modified, they're not going to run in March and April in cross-country because of the condition. That's not, that's not... So there's been a lot of behind the scenes, and they're kind of waiting to see what happens tonight with the school voting. And, uh, there's another meeting I think you have tomorrow, and hopefully by the end of, but cross-country is doable, short, tight schedule where they actually get to do something. Some of these kids have been running all summer on their own. I haven't had anything to do with it. They haven't run, I haven't had anything to do with it.
Sure.
On their own. Some of them have gone to Saratoga behind you more difficultly, so anyway.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So what's the chance if we do not have modified soccer because of facility up there? What's the chance of those kids practicing with JV varsity? Just to have that opportunity to get out there.
We run into, we run into what would be called interscolastic rules there that would disallow that. Some of the eighth graders can't mix with JV varsity kids because of their age.
But that's okay for...
We don't, we don't lift, right?
They don't mix.
It's a little bit different.
It's a little bit different.
They don't mix.
They don't mix. They're, they're on their own individual running.
Same time. That is allowed, yeah.
Yeah, but like to practice them together, you can't.
Could we do the same thing with the soccer? Instead, we just don't...
I think, I think you're, you're looking at a different aspect of something that could be allowed, possibly, with, with it not, a lot of the JV and varsity kids are that, not mixing in with the JV varsity kids. That's the part I, I, I know we can't allow.
How many modified girls are signed up?
Roughly 20.
That's it? No, because I mean, I know sometimes in the past we've got almost enough producing. So if that was the case, they could try and get some charge.
We can maybe look at something like that for, you know. Once again, you know, we have to make a decision and it's difficult. It's not...
Well, here's what, here's what I'm hearing. We'll have to take a vote on it. Who for with JV varsity sports has outlined in the plan, no late bus? And revisit the possibility of an intramural for modified students. Once we get the things rolling and make sure everything's working out.
All in favor? All, I'm going to vote for the varsity group boys across country, but I'm not going to give them second.
For the first question?
A comment? Glad in a minute. I think we're taking too much of a risk. Just to make sure kids have a chance to do sports. I'm not trying to be a hard ass, and if I come across that, I apologize. I'm looking at the liability of kids playing sports at other schools. We can't, you know, seem to get our kids, we have parents now that don't want their kids to come to school. That tells you something, that there are concerns. And I think that's the way I just want to portray this, is concerns that I have, that this isn't... I hope it works. I don't want it not to work. And once these, I played sports a month, but do you really have to come to school?
Well, I could say that.
But this, this environment we're looking at is really neat. And even if these kids bring this home to one of their parents or grandparents, that's what I'm looking at. My wife does a lot of research on this. It's just the concern of one of these kids bringing something home to their parents or grandparents. And then what have we done? I'm just not trying to play it boom and boom, I'm just trying to tell you the way it feels. It's not to hurt any kids or any coaches.
You had your answer.
Thank you. Any other questions? Feel free to email me.
We'll think of something after you leave.
Or call me, please, if you have any questions or concerns. There's a lot of misinformation out there, and I'm trying to keep it clear.
Right.
Thank you for all your hard work.
I don't think there's any good information. I think every day you turn the news media on or an expert on this, you get a different twist down just what, how embedded this thing really is.
Okay, building and grounds report included in the packet. Questions on that?
I have a question, yes. We talked about the tractor, but was that what we thought we were going to have just a little bit of extra money? Was that part of that group of stuff, or we, yeah?
It was in the initial, um...
Wish list.
Wish list, yeah. Some wish list items that we had talked about in the first presentation, first budget workshop. Uh, and we looked at each department, um, what kind of items they wanted included in the budget. So, uh, Mr. Redmond has been talking to the board for at least the last three years to help me for us to trade in the tractor for a new one. Uh, we haven't had the funds available to do that, um, the last few years. Um, but he did very much want me to, and he actually brought Mr. Hondo down to look at also. So Scott might be able to tell you a little bit more about what kind of a tractor than I can. But, um, we are, we did, after that, what's report was sent, we did get, um, voted up to, it's out of warranty, but they are going to split the costs with us, one-third of, one-third, um, the dealer that we bought it from, and that one-third of the vote to have it opened and looked at. Um, that's a heavy cost in itself, but they don't want us running it. So in that report, I never really knew if it had been, that was my decision to end at least, uh, given that we're getting running it. The vote does not want us to continue running it, so they decided to split the costs three ways and, and include that cost. But we do not run into further issues. Uh, but they, as probably as we do since we're so renewable, so we wanted to just have it looked at, um, as possible and not have the cost before the so starts to, we don't want to be in a different, but we don't have it.
Yeah, so the, the cost, the way the rear end is designed and that, they got to split the tractor. So the cost is about $6,000 just to take it apart and look at it. The part is cheap, but $6,000 to take it apart and put it back together. So, I mean, we're still on the hook for about two grand. When I talked to Dave right after it happened, well, shortly after it happened, uh, he's, he was going to cut the hydraulic filter apart and make sure there wasn't any catastrophic stuff floating around in there. And he didn't think there would be any, neither. It's just a small fork that moves gear back and forth. But it's just, it's just the, the way it's designed, it's very expensive to get to. We talked about, and I don't know if he told you, we talked about, because I said just keep running it, because even if it breaks in the winter, it's cheap enough to rent a skistir with a snow blower to keep going. But it's something that needs to be fixed, and now that's out of warranty, that was the importance of trying to keep it in, the tractor in warranty. So we should definitely consider replacing it sooner rather than later.
I have to look back.
I don't, I don't. No, it was more than that, sixty-some thousand. But three years ago, at $60,000, our tractor was worth $40,000 on trading. But now it's dead, it's not, obviously.
Probably not worth trading on.
I don't know, I don't...
I have that, I have that from, we'll get it with you guys, um, last spring, so I have to just blow up my mind when you take it.
Generally, you lose $6,000 to $8,000 a year on trade value if it's well taken care of, for the amount of hours we're, we run them. Right. Right.
Yeah, we got a tech, we got a tech.
Yeah, yeah, so now we've bought tires as well. Another reason to get rid of them. Well, we're, we're not budgeting for a new one right now.
Now, that's, did he need Ford tires for that, or just two? Was it just Ford or Ferrari?
Yeah, it was just two, the two old tires were, like, twelve years old.
On the rear. Now, were they turf tires?
Yes, turf. Which I told him is, that's why I was, I felt comfortable telling him just keep running, because it's turf tires. And they run on the grass and they were trying to stay off the pavement, moving. No, they don't run chains all the time. Transportation report. Questions on the transportation report?
Are we doing okay with bus drivers?
Yeah, we got our last position filled by Mr. Boyer. Um, I believe it's actually in your packet for tonight at all. So that was the last vacant position, and that one is going to take the place of the Little Falls Fonda bus contract that we usually run. So that was a big savings for the district to, um, to get a bus driver our own this year. And the cost went down, we had compared costs previous years, and it was, um, cheaper to go with Little Falls Fonda because we had a monitor on the bus, uh, to transport those students. Um, and now there's only two, I believe, that are going, and there wouldn't, there does not, there will not be a monitor on bus. So all we're paying is for the driver's salary to benefit, so it was a savings to roll that route this year, running that contract this year.
We could not be able to get everybody with A or B without any extra plus, like, trip trips or... Theoretically, we could do it with everybody, right? We have to do more than one bus. Although you have more people, we're in the kids' school, right? Just cause I have Chuck's replacement.
Oh, yeah. Very good. She had it in the machine. Katrina is, um, doing very well as a keeper. Um, I saw her this morning, um, doing the training on the red one, pulled up.
Pulling weeds from the defensive football field. She's got all the weeds here, nineteen, down the sidewalks, down the curb. It looks great coming up here. I, I can't say enough about this girl that she's done already.
And she's working on the baseball field right now, um, just, um, if we do have sports, um, start up.
Baseball fields never look better in the fall than the way it's looking right now. I'm so happy.
She, her priority was to get it, even though we're not using it in the fall, to get it visually appealing for when people are up in that area. So when they see it, they're not pointing and saying, what's going on? She does a lot when you're, yeah, and we all have chips on, and she dugouts.
And the dugouts, dugouts are still...
We're waiting on the permit, Jessica, correct?
Yep, we're waiting on it.
This should be early October, and then the double G should be able to start.
Yeah, we're looking at October.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're doing it right around the, with the same, um, at the same time, so that we don't have to do a double suspension. So that we can group together. Mr. Krieg, if you can help that people work better.
Your fault.
Oh, yeah, Eric's up a lot. We're, we're also working on the building condition survey. Um, so he's been coming up with a couple of different, um, engineers, um, to just go through the building and write down priorities. Um, but we, we did give an email today or yesterday about the high priority items that we're going to have to talk to the facility committee about, um, for the capital outlet project that's in our budget, about $95,000, um, that we can spend this year for a small little project for June 30. Um, so he had just listed from going through the building over the last couple of weeks, the really big priorities that he wants us to discuss with the facility committee for that little project. Um, so we have to talk about that. So we will be working on, I'll be talking to Krieg about when we can get the facility committee, um, meeting together, so that we can discuss some ongoing things.
Is Dave going to give us a breakdown of it, or is this your breakdown?
That's not my breakdown.
That was your breakdown?
Yes.
Uh, the revenue analysis and expansion analysis is included for you. Uh, their revenue analysis and expenditure analysis is included for you. And we need a motion to approve reports A through E.
One quick question.
Go ahead.
No, and we, Cindy and I got a message today that the funding should be available about twenty days after the established was published in the paper, then established was published on the twenty-seventh of August. Okay, I thought it was again, the twenty-eighth of August. So it'll be at least twenty days from that till we can see the funding for it and then.
Do we have a, an amendment for our news buses, or are they given trade?
They trade, they're traded in, yep. We're gonna, we're gonna give them to get our.
Did you look at any deal, what we will make in getting to those buses?
They give us about ten million buses, it's, it's all like, right on the proposal from.
Do you try to keep a certain number, how do you break them, by hours or by mileage? So what's the, what's the mileage that we usually trade a little bus in? You don't have to give that to me.
I didn't even know about that, because you guys see that.
Well, and warranty plays into it too, you might have one bus that has less miles, but it's coming out of warranty, so we wanna get rid of it before it comes out of warranty. Right, and we skipped a year, so it's even harder now.
It was based on the warranty, right?
Yeah, the warranty's the big driver, the bus replacement.
Oh, yeah, that's what we go, we go by like warranty.
So we could have twenty thousand miles on it?
Well. We use, we use all of our buses every day.
Joe tried, he said before, he tries to rotate them with the sports and field trips, so they all get about the same mileage, right? You know, they're using the same bus every day for bus routes, but then he rotates them through all the other stuff that we use buses for.
Do we still get them rest captured here?
I think so.
We did.
I'm not sure if it's ever here. I know we did before, but I'm not sure if it's ever here. I can ask.
Do we find the product ourselves, or we brought the product? Or we brought the product for him, let him use yourself?
That's what we used to do at the village.
Yeah, because we can get the product cheaper than you know it is.
After another questions, we need to approve the reports. All in favor. Old business, athletic code of conduct, second reading and adoption. All in favor.
This one regular code of conduct, defeating ones who change that in perpetuity. I think I looked through it for all of you, because he's on the committee, and I think he said five changes. That's, tonight is the first reading, but it should have been the second, but I didn't realize that it had already been done yet, so we're basically a month behind. Look for the website and just put a draft on it to the people that we see it. We did the same thing with our building emergency plan. It should have been, it's supposed to be on the website at the start of school. And it's supposed to be accepted by the state ed department by September thirty. But we're not gonna meet that because you won't see the second meeting and adopt it until the middle of October. But if they say anything, they're gonna say what's gonna be done, and I'll just tell them, so.
So that's the next two bullets, district court of conduct, first reading, and there was a public comment, email. Gotcha, gotcha, I was confused. District-wide school safety plan, first reading. So look through those, make sure you forward any comments, so we can get those changed and have the second reading and adoption next month. Approve building safety plan twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. All in favor. Interagency agreement for school patrol officer service between the Village of Dowsville and Dowsville Central School District for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
Looking at the, the salary for this, annual payment to Village of Dowsville, is this still being a half and a half year or no?
No, it hasn't been, the village is just a pasture for a payment.
But this is a little less than. Oh, because he doesn't. He's, because he's retired. He's retired, and he's now in S Pville.
Right.
Or we have a person, so we've got currently, there are savings for it.
We need a motion to approve that. All in favor. Approve a MOA between the school district and the DTA, or administrator association, rather. All in favor. MOA between the school district and the DTA, that's this one. All in favor. Accept a donation, Mr. and Mrs. William Naples. All in favor. Accept a donation Salvation Army, Barbara Hartness, thirty backpacks filled with school supplies. All in favor. Accept donation Chevy U Sports Program, Fusil Chevrolet, Nelliston. All in favor. Accept donation Dowsville Basketball Program. All in favor. Approve extra classroom clubs for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. All in favor.
I live in the middle school.
Create full-time office assistant two position. All in favor. Create teaching assistant for one year funded through the CARES grant.
Scott, just so I can mention about this office two position. When you heard Mike Ross, you say that we did not have separation duties in the business department. This is really the fix with that, so that we have separation duties, so that the treasures not be lost. And so I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
All in favor. Uh, any questions on the school resource officer name update? For Jessica, she included a pretty detailed letter for us. Uh, my letter to Mr. Novak on behalf of the board was included.
Did you ever get this back?
No. Legal notice from BOSI regarding a building purchase referendum that's going to take place Tuesday, September twenty-ninth.
It's very important, we've talked about it before, but in order for BOSI to duplicate this building and give it a full school business time, all the costs, nearly about fifteen million footprints there. They also rent or lease space at Jarvis and at. Thick CVA also. Yes, well, that's where the administration.
Yeah.
But for one dollar, what this entails is if people go for this, it's a one-dollar purchase of the building for CVA. But in return, CVA will get, I think it's around eight hundred thousand dollars in state aid. The caveat to this is, though, and a lot of everybody knows this, is that the building is in compliance with all the state ed regulations that this needs to be updated to high school site. The running to school is actually a elementary school. So some of the facilities that are near to elementary school age students. But down the line, the savings and the fees that we won't have to pay on the building, we put that towards the luxury buildings, and one dollar is very impressive.
Yeah, and your bill.
Who's gonna run the voting, Josh, or? Your lucky key. You have a question on the school patrol officer. He has personal time, will there have to be, they will, they'll have to supply?
Yeah, it's in the contract that the village had to supply a temporary, tell him. It's in the contract.
Yeah, he's already bribed it to work, he's substituted, it's just an act.
Uh, you'll notice in your packet, got an updated superintendent vacancy brochure. Well, she'll, she'll be meeting with. Right, she'll be meeting with stakeholder groups tomorrow to get their input. And then she'll meet with us again next month.
I have to take her to bus garage, she doesn't get lost, so I'll be able to try to worm something out of that.
And with that, we're on the board forum, Mr. Maxwell.
I don't have my time, all I do know is that the military are across the yard.
Going to start, or did start? Last Wednesday, or last? I think it was supposed to start on Thursday.
There was, there was a new one there.
Last, last Thursday.
They hired two of these.
Okay. So now there's gonna be one on Thursday.
It was their last Friday. They hired one just today.
Yeah, they just put another hat on for another one. There is, there is something there.
He's been putting his, he gets on call.
But the new guy.
Is there a Thursday?
On what stage?
No.
He was in his car, right next to the, the. Not the police officer. The new crossing guard, yeah. He was in his car, he's in there. He was there. So hopefully, this second person who wants to be on the stage, hopefully.
Tell me, go ahead.
It's not a painful job, though, there appears to be a period of breaks. I saw me give them. There's kids that are good, that man in the bottom of the cell that waits to, every single one of the kids. Every single person, and I can tell you that those kids appreciate it, because mine is in the backseat. Oh, you don't think he sees me, I'm like, he sees you.
Thank you all so much for all your hard work in the school. And I know, because I have children, at every, at every level, I have worked them in ways, and you know I have some connection with some others. Everyone seems to be very, very happy. Great for children, have great first dates, second dates. That might be friendly, but I'm grateful so much. I don't really see, but in their minds, it's like.
Well, I haven't heard much either, so that's good, they usually people call me. Yes, true, so, we're good on that, so.
Everything seems good with you guys, so I'm gonna be in for Thursday. Ciao.
Well done. And I got something, so you guys. I got something, okay. Um, I wanna thank everybody, because it was, it was very hard opening the school, and I really wanna thank all the representatives. Superintendent's Day, excellent speech made by Mr. Winger, and a wonderful welcome speech by Scott. On September the eighth, O B Day, I, it went so well, I, I couldn't believe it. Even the kids, everybody had a mask on the ground going into the school, the track, the road, smoothly, and waiting. On the tenth, I went over to the elementary room, it was free, I wanted to see how the buses went. And he waved at two buses, and they came around the circle, they let them out. Very well-oiled machine, I wanna thank everybody, it was just an excellent job, I hope we can achieve, I think we will be able to. Um, I wanna thank Mr. Naples for, for the donation, we're gonna make sure this goes to Naples. I wanna tell you a little bit about Mr. Naples. If I were in a group called Packers in Forest, I would hope that Mr. Naples, when he looks, he knows the forest like the back of his hand. In fact, toward the end of his time in Dowsville, he took my husband's history classes on a tour of all the Dowsville fields, all the surrounding areas, to show them what was safe and edible, and what was poisonous, and what they should stay away from. So, I miss you, Mr. Naples, and thank you for the donation. Um, I wanna thank Audrey for the beautiful mask, okay? I haven't seen the seniors, they've got different masks.
They had a couple of mom. Mrs. Winkler, who really became such an integral part of all this, because it's loud.
Was it a twenty-one under?
They have the school also, and then it's a senior twenty-one.
Thank you. I will tell Audrey. Okay, I wanna thank Barbara Hartness and the Salvation Army for the donation of the, of that. I wanna thank Mr. Chris Campbell Chevrolet, this is her second year for the thousand-dollar donation. Okay, I wanna thank all the custodians, the house, the place is beautiful, you can eat off the floors. I wanna thank Dave, Wayne, Katrina, the conditions outside are amazing, everything is amazing. And I also wanna make a special thank you to Matt Randall for all the work that he is putting in. He took me aside, he showed me the new smart boards and how they work, and I actually had a little training, and I wanted to thank him. And last but not least, I'm looking forward to a very healthy, productive year. Based on all these early returns, I think we're on our way to a sense of. Thank you all. Thank you all.
They should pretty quick, all that.
I don't want to leave her to bring her for me because I don't want to follow her.
It's hard to do this, and that presentation. Everything that she said, I was going to say, so. Yeah? I just wanted to thank her, just because it sounds like, it sounds like a really big office. But I just wanted to thank, said the school is great, and the front door, and the administration's staff, coaches, athletic director, principals. Mr. Bragg, I must have had quite a, quite a ride on you so far.
Man, it's got breeze.
I'm having a blast.
I'm glad, I'm glad, because right now we need that type of personality, that every student is stuck. I appreciate it.
First of all, I'd like to make a formal request to go before Mary Lou next meeting. He's cramping my style. Seriously, ditto on all fronts. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you all of you for everything that you are doing, every little problem that pops up and you jump on it almost immediately. Mr. Lee, thank you for, again, riding that forward coaster ride with athletics and fighting for our kids to be able to get out there and do something. Jessica Goldstar, because our auditor, I don't know if you caught it, said that Jessica's excellent budgeting was definitely reflected in our audit. And hopefully, hopefully, we have the problem of where to put reserves rather than estate keeping twenty percent. So let's cross our fingers for that. Sandy, your name also came up in the audit committee meeting, because you do an excellent job also with those extracurricular activity counts. And Mr. Winger, thank you so much for everything.
You're welcome. I have to give her credit, too, because every time I sit with an auditor of our school audit, that's the one area that they catch every school. And I remember Mike Ross, he was a lot younger then, said to me, if I could, I'd take this one right here and bring her to all the other schools, because it's the one place that money can disappear. And it's very hard, you heard of it, it's a cash business, it's very hard to control what's there. And she does a great job of making sure at least what can be controlled is always spot on. So thanks, Sandy.
She can't go anywhere.
Yes.
Did you work with her when you were in your chair?
Sure, she was my secretary. She had five, she worked out of the three.
I was happy to make her a chair.
I know.
So I go last, which is like the worst. A big thank you to the administration for formulating a plan, following the plan, sticking to the plan. Thank you to the teachers for going along with the plan and really helping jumpstart the school district. I mean, some schools didn't start till yesterday, some aren't starting till next week. So it's great that we got out on the normal start date and started moving. Mr. Zalkowski, have fun. And to the custodians and the maintenance people, it's, it's a lot of tireless work to keep it clean between two different groups, and I just want to thank them for their efforts. And with that, we need a motion to go into executive, go ahead.
You notice I did a little up, I just kept. Go ahead. You had a chance to go to a couple cabinet meetings, seeing what kind of trials, turbulence that other superintendents are going through, or questions that they've got about everything?
Well, the BOC's superintendent's cabinet, there seem to be a lot of those meetings before school started. Our next one is not until September eighteenth.
Oh.
And they're virtual, and I would prefer to be in person with those people. They throw things back and forth. I, I think that, my own personal opinion is that a couple of those schools delayed until yesterday to open. In my opinion, they made a mistake, but that was what they felt that they had to do for their school. And I, I was positive from the first day I walked in here and listened to these girls and the committee about opening this school, that September eighth was what was planned on your calendar. Unless the governor told me we had to close, we were opening on September eighth. And we did. And it has gone very well because of all the stuff that they've done and the staff. So thank you all of you for thanking all of those people, because they certainly have been above and beyond the call of duty on everything that they have done so far. Can I ask you another question?
I was just gonna ask. I think that for sixteen, I think.
For an hour and a half. They are two.
They have EVA in it.
No, I actually asked again, the January of May, and we are higher on the priority list, so they're not getting off the schools that ordered first because they've got our back order. So we're moving up that list, but we still don't have an estimated date that they.
It's longer than the eight weeks they told us when we want. Let's put it that way.
If I do, yeah.
Kind of the galling commodity that everybody went for late in the summer.
Just the toilet shaker of summer. And the schools that already have them, just so you know, they're having, are trying to get a solution that goes in. So it's not only us that are having issues with the car resistance, even the schools that have them now can't get the solution, so.
There are no solutions. I, I think we missed, we did that mention, parents and students. No one has mentioned that. And I think that's a great, important part of the school, making it, is their support. I think that should be noted in every meeting, especially during this time, that these parents have really done some extraordinary things for these kids. They're actually sometimes educating someone.
But any increase in communication will be available next year. Probably a third of the, of everybody are communicating with parents.
Their support is integral to the school. What else?
And their children. Because let me tell you, a seven-year-old reminds me every single morning, Mom, where's my flip? I need my flip. They have really, really good, done a great job adjusting to all these new things. They just, they opened already from day one. It was like, oh, this is what we need. And they were excited. They're excited about all this stuff. And I'm like, oh, great, I'm so happy. I'm so happy you love this, you know? And they're just so excited with these new things. Oh, we got to, we got to have art in our classroom, and we get to go outside for gym. And, oh, there's only eight kids in my class, so I get to see it, you know? They're just, they seem to be incredibly happy, and I'm so glad. Great, thank you. And then they, they're all excited about their presence and their company. You know, it's a big deal. They love it. It's, it's nothing like the buses, right? Nothing. Nothing. No, because they are prepared, they know exactly what's expected of them, and they are very excited about all this, this new, it's new. It's like, you know, school kind of gets boring after a while for all of them. And it's, it's like this change. I'm so excited about my new mask. I just, all these things, look what I got at school today. They are very excited, and they are adapting, I think, so well. And someone said before, you know, it's harder for us as adults to adapt to this change. And our attitude, obviously, our kids are going to reflect it. But I tell you, these kids are, they know this, we all know this, they, they're just, they just go with it, and they adapt.
They're in their masks. They're over it, like the kids.
Yeah, I know. Well, because they're going lanyards, they got to the lanyards to go with, you know? So they're like, oh, I got to go lanyard. It's, it's amazing. And so I am very grateful. So, so much I should want to add.
Anybody else?
Well, thank you, Mr. Winger, for, for allowing me to express my feelings about Charles Star. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, we need a motion to go into executive session.
All in favor.
I found well your back.